Lena, can you? Okay. All right, we're gonna call this meeting of the school building committee together for Thursday, February 9, 2023. Our first item on the agenda is the approval of the January 26 minutes.
I'm moving approve them.
Okay, we have a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Chris Kiefer and second from Mary. Any corrections to those minutes? Okay, see none, then all in favor of approving the minutes, please indicate. Thank you. Any opposed or abstentions? Okay. That brings us to opportunity for public input. Is there anybody from the public that would like to address the building committee? See none, we'll move on. We do have one item to add to the agenda today, and that's to affirm the votes that we had at our last meeting. The agenda wasn't posted in time, so is there a motion from someone to add to the agenda? Affirmation of the votes from the January 26 SBC meeting. Thank you, Tony. Is there a second? Thank you, Mary. All in favor, please indicate. Opposed or extensions? Okay. So we'll add that to the agenda when we do the PCOS a little bit later. Okay, that brings us then to our contractor architect and OPM update. We're who do we? Adam, I don't know if you want to kind of take a lead on this and then we can.
Yeah, let me. Richard and Steve are out can hop in. So as I indicated in the email, the project is transitioning towards its the last leg, if you will. Now, a lot of this leg will be particularly long, just based on some of the constraints around finishing some of the items. You know about the playground surfacing that's wait until summer and some of the last procurement items that have had supply chain issues that are getting resolved and installed as they get put in. But the focal point is shifted now that we have both the certificate of occupancy and substantial completion behind us. It's really a target is Newfield going through the punch list items, completing those. And then the owner side of things, getting started in the building and transitioning to actually going and operating the building when school starts April 18th. So that was the reason why I included just the snippet of some of the trainings that are ongoing and some of the training schedule in your packet to give you a sense of what are some of the day to day items that are being focused on as we go through. So there's Peter and Lauren and their team working on operating the building, getting familiar with it, getting in there. For example, we had movers today bringing in some of the stored boxes that was with the moving company and putting those and spreading those to the rooms as appropriate. More of that will continue as we go on. And then also identifying any items that want to be reviewed as as Peter and Lauren and their teams get in the building and seeing if there's things that might need to be tweaked or changed or what. So those discussions are ongoing to see if, you know, an additional shelf wants to be bought here or if there's some signage that needs to be changed there or things of that nature that you don't you don't realize until you get in there and start working through the space as a working space and then realizing, oh, yeah, this this looked this way on plans, but is there a way to to review how we're doing it? Or is there a setting in the system that needs to be changed, those kinds of items? In addition, there are some initiatives that are still being worked through, some of the bigger items. To a from a, you know, a programmatic extent, there's the toilet partition divider in the game bathrooms that we're working through and reviewing as to what the resolution wants to be there. But then also there's items like the I mentioned in the email, there was a some water that came out and flooded portions of the gym from my sprinkler head. And so the the I don't know if Steve or I'll have an update on that. It was being worked through by some of the subcontractors and things, but working through what the resolution path is. We're I don't know if we have that for tonight, but as we get those pieces of information, even though there's not, you know, as as much of a photographic update of watching the building be constructed, want to make sure the SBT is still in the loop as to what's going on day to day, even though we don't have, you know, the deluge of reports and photos and things that might normally have.
So Adam, this is Steve. Let me give you an update.
Yep, perfect.
Serve Pro is coming back to the job tomorrow. To we need to pull some sheetrock and investigate any water infiltration behind the sheetrock. They want to check a reading on the surface of the floor. We've requested that they bring a scope because we pulled all the vented base and we're concerned about moisture underneath the vapor barrier. So we want to scope the underneath the floor and at least try to find out where the out if there's moisture where the outside limits are and then work backwards. So that's going on tomorrow. Our insurance carrier has confirmed to us, although we don't have it yet, that they have established the claim number and are in communications with the painting contractors who allegedly is one of his guys snapped the sprinkler head. And their company is, I think, federal. So we think by next week, we'll have like a formal report on how best to move forward. And then what ultimately is going to happen and how we progress with the corrective work. We are kind of at we're going to move it forward as quickly as we can, but we don't want to miss any steps relative to the insurance claim, if you can understand that. We're getting a letter, I think, tomorrow from the wood flooring subcontractor who's who's come down and visited the job and and report to us that we'll file with the insurance adjusters. A field is the best track to take with the areas that got wet. So that's kind of where we stand right now. And as soon as we get a read from the insurance companies, we'll move it forward.
Okay, question from Ryan.
Yeah, I just I guess the question I had was the the drywall, you know, that got wet and other materials that haven't been, you know, basically removed yet. Is that all was that all kind of left as was for insurance purposes for them to see? What was, I guess, without being kind of deconstructed? I asked just because it seems to me if things get wet, like letting it sit there and not airing out, you know, like leaving the wall, I would I guess I would have expected, you know, drywall, insulate, everything kind of going back to the studs immediately to kind of get air to it, but maybe not.
Well, the it's the day of the incident, we we pulled, I think, one of the toilet accessory devices. And we're able to probe inside the wall. It didn't appear as if things got wet. Sir Pro has probes in the walls right now and are reports that it may be surface water. But I don't disagree with you. The sooner we can get to it, the better off we all are. And again, we can't. I just don't want to miss any steps here. And if we've got to chase wet drywall or wet insulation further than what's required, it'll absolutely get done. I don't disagree with you. We certainly would have liked to have had the insurance companies react a little quicker where they're at now.
Thank you. Chris.
Steve, it just wasn't clear this. You're sounding a little bit anyway, difficult to hear. Can you say again what you said about the subcontractor? Are they have they come yet? Are they going to come? What's can you repeat that?
The painting subcontractor has been nonresponsive. We contacted through our risk manager, their insurance company. And we attempted to get a claim number so we could, you know, keep track of time and cost and how best to move forward. And as of today, we had not received a claim number from the subcontractor's insurance agent. So we got our insurance company involved. And I guess in the world of insurance, one insurance company to another, you get better reaction. We were told that a claim number has been established by our insurance company and they are going to secure one from from the subcontractor's insurance.
And you'd mentioned the flooring subcontractor. What is happening with that?
He's been on the job. He looked at the floor. He looked at what we were doing to mitigate any any moisture infiltration. He's supposed to be writing a letter that we would receive tomorrow on how best to on how best to deal with the situation from where he viewed it.
So his best advice, in other words.
His best advice.
Okay.
And ultimately, you know, it's it's going to fall on us presenting that to the town. And what are the best options? What's the best to keep you guys whole? I think that's the most important thing.
Great. Thank you, Steve.
Yep.
Steve, one item that I think came up earlier, but earlier in the week, Mac Fire came out and they they confirmed that the the sprinkler pipe itself was fine. It just it was clearly struck by something, correct?
Yes. We've got we didn't see him physically hit the pipe. He helped us with the cleanup and then our guys can just kind of like was how did it happen? Why did it happen? And he was wearing a T shirt and then they went over to his work area and his 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 Carhartt sweatshirt was saturated with water. And he had stripped it off and his ladder was laying. It was his ladder laying on the floor. So unfortunately, I bet you the individual was was probably nervous about it, but he just didn't step up to the plate. But we knew it was him. He also had a a story pole with a paintbrush on it, duct taped to the top of the story pole, and he was probably on that ladder, reaching up to try to get the backside of some pipe and he whacked the head. So that's how we've reported it to our insurance agent. We've got photographs and all that, and we've reported that to Scholar Painting and their agent as well. Now their agent has been responsive, but we don't have a claim number, which is it's just kind of invisible to us. We just we need to get ServPro to write their report to say you've got we've got all the moisture out. Now you can do your repairs.
Chris McMoRan.
And unfortunately, there's a thousand broken pipes with the cold weather this past weekend and ServPro is everywhere. So that might take a little bit longer. Do they give you an indicator about how fast they can get that moisture response, Steve?
Chris, they're going to be there tomorrow. I I think maybe Brian Grant from our end will be up there as well to meet with them and try to get at least physically see where they are and what we can do to start opening up some sheetrock or pulling up some floor or whatever. But tomorrow they'll be there. Ultimately, I think we at that point, we can press them on when are we going to get a report?
They're at my place today if you want to get them.
Oh, did you? Did you have a sprinkler pipe broke?
Yep.
That's too bad.
Tony.
This is really a question for Peter. What does this mean for opening the school on the 18th? And also, what does this mean for the use of the gymnasium for the rest of the semester?
So we'll wait to find out the the total scope of it, but already started to think about our transition. We're not dependent on the gym, certainly not that quadrant of the gym. So we feel that we can flex and work with it, even if there was just a temporary fix. And we paused for a longer break like summer to do any remediation that might involve more work. But we're full steam ahead. We're on that accelerator pedal, no looking back.
Yeah, I was there today to see where see where they are. They've got the moisture mats, they'll pull in moisture. But the cupping that 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 kind of showed itself initially is not as prevalent as it was Monday. We literally can can as long as we got the mold out of the walls, if there is any, and the moisture out of the drywall via replacement, which happened down that corridor and in the associated or related bathroom. But there's no drywall damage in the the sprinkler got hit in the quarter near the near the office. And what's on the main gym floor is probably a 20 foot by 25 foot area as it migrated out of that hallway in front of the office. So when you walk in, it's directly to the left of the entrance and directly to the left of the stage. We literally, as long as we took care of the mold and or or drywall, they can use the gym. There's no tripping hazards. And to Peter's point, if if the replacement is more evasive, then we'd probably have to schedule it in the summertime or during a week off or whatever.
Right.
Steve, is the is the office affected significantly or at all?
No, it was really in the corridor. It migrated over, you know, down that hallway and kind of wrapped into the office. It didn't really it didn't. The head was hit in the hallway heading.
I understand. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions on gym floor and we can move on. Tony?
Just a quick one. Are you are you suggesting that some of the boards which are currently bent or cupped or whatever the appropriate term could return to their original state when they dry out?
Um, I don't think they will return to their original state. But the cupping that we identified and measured on Monday was about an eighth of an inch. It's probably less than a sixteenth right now. So if 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 the moisture is out, the wood's dried out, it's a matter of stripping the sealer and sanding those areas down to get it back to level and then resealing. That would be the minimum item that would be done. Oh, there you go. You can see where the mats are. Thanks. Who brought that picture up? Alan?
That's from Adam.
That's me. I'm useful every once in a while.
So if you look at that doorway where Adam's got the arrow, that's where the sprinkler pipe got hit. Where the mats are is where the water got into the gym. And it's about a 20 foot by 25 foot area. And then where they in that corridor, you'll see the dehumidifier. And that's the wall that got wet on the bathroom side.
Right around back over here. So water kind of rolled down the ramp.
But that's the common wall to the bathroom. Yeah.
Okay, then. Next topic, Adam, you've got other things to bring up?
No, that that's that's largely the crux of it. It's like I said, just there's a thousand different small items, punch list items, PCOs, things like that to to work through over the next two months leading up to starting school.
Okay, so.
As Richard and Jeff looked at the block, I think I was looking at it today. I think we got it licked.
I was just going to mention that. I was in the gym yesterday. And I think the the CMU looks great. So I what your whatever your process was for staining the other blocks, it seems to have worked. To Jeff, yeah, we'll ask Jeff, do you like it?
Uh, well, it was okay with Richard. Maybe I'll swing by tomorrow morning.
Okay. Now, that would be great. I was at the site last Wednesday and Thursday reviewing punch list items with Newfield. And it happened to be when the painter was there or the mason stainer was there that this is an art. We've had masonry stained on other projects in the past for one reason or another, if the masonry were mismatched or if we try to blend the masonry into an existing wall. And it is an art. It takes you have to paint a stain carefully, unit by unit, step back, do some more if necessary. And I was there earlier in the day when the stainer was there and he was underway. And I gave him what I thought needed some attention, areas that needed more blending than others. And he understood. He understood that the idea was to blend in the sharp edges of the dark stain to make sure that they're feathered in to the adjacent masonry. And I said I'd come back at the end of the day and take a look at it, and he made great progress. I like it, but if Jeff, you want to stop by and take a look at it and tell me what you think later. So the the project has come along a great deal. I mean, you know that we're at issuance of certificate of substantial completion, which is the date at which warranties start on the areas that we've punched. And we punched everything except for the site work that's to be done when weather changes and except for the gymnasium. So we established a value for the gymnasium work that's remaining. When I was there, they still needed to put the bleachers in and they still needed to put the wall pads up. So that area is not technically punched out yet. But I'm very pleased by the way the project has progressed. It was very exciting to see when the furniture was being delivered. Susan was there. She did a great job putting up signs where the furniture goes, which vendor goes in which room, what's the material that needs to be installed in each room? And then she came back and she did her walkthrough when they were completed. And the rooms were completely transformed once the furniture arrived. I think a lot of people were excited by what they were seeing there. There's still some things to be done. We, as part of the certificate of substantial completion, issued a punch list. And I think at that time, we had maybe 100, 150 items that still needed to be addressed. Not not including the gymnasium, which we have to go back to. And of course, not including the site work that still needs to be done. So I think the projects come along very nicely.
Richard, as it relates to the gym, though, you did meet with Brian and Brad and kind of concurred what we're looking at, you're looking at, and I think they forwarded a copy of our punch list. Other than you viewing the pads and the work that isn't installed, I think we're all on the same page on what you're going to be looking at, correct?
That is correct. I did meet with Brian and Brad. We spent quite a bit of time in the gymnasium. They were pointing out things on their punch list, which they conveyed to me. I concurred what needed to be done. And so we just need to come back and do another final walkthrough.
Tony has a question.
I did the tour yesterday and I was on tour with our most critical council member who was concerned about one of the beams in the hallway as you enter the school, which has a chip out of it near the wall area. And he meant he took photographs and and the there's a paint job along there also that's a little messy. Is that on your punch list and how would you repair that that chip out of the out of the beam?
Is it a is it a beam or is it a column?
It's a beam.
It's a glue lamb beam. Yeah, it's one of the glue lamb beams. It's it's kind of the chip is a little smaller than a than a phone. And it's above the display for the solar information across from the media center.
I did not notice that, so it's not on my punch list. We can go take a look at it. If it's if it's just a cosmetic chip, the only thing that you can do is perhaps sand it down to get rid of the sharp edges on it. And if it's necessary, stain it to try to blend it in. But there's there's no applying a patch that would only make things worse.
I believe you will hear about this in the future if some attention isn't paid to it.
Yeah, we'll reach out to the glue lamp manufacturer, take a picture of it. I think we probably already have. Send the picture to him and have him come up with a recommend date for a recommended fix. We we don't feel it's structural of nature. It's a supervision. Now, you're 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 rigging and hanging glue lamb timbers as you would structural steel and unfortunately are not as forgiving as structural steel. Watch protection as you can. And then you get somebody with a lift that waxes it and doesn't tell us. So I think for the most part, it's pretty good. We we saw that one chip. As far as the paint, the lower section was being sanded out and prepared for the rest of the improv. Was he looking at the upper section or was he looking at the patchwork on the lower section?
It was right around the the beam, actually. It was I'm not quite sure what it was. Maybe it was a duct of some sort, but it looked it actually looked dented and a little messy.
All right, we'll take a look at that.
Are there other questions for start with questions for Richard or Jeff?
I do have one more comment.
Please go ahead, Richard.
That I would like to make. I want to remind the committee that we were authorized to perform extended construction administration services through the end of December. But we do need to talk about, we don't need a decision tonight, but we do need to talk about how we continue or if we continue going forward. We've done work during January and we expect that we'll be back at various times in the future. Especially our sub consultants, Richter and Seagan, the landscape architects and Fuss and O'Neal, the civil engineers will probably be back, but especially Richter and Seagan when it comes time to plant material and select plant material. I think you would want them to be involved, but at this point, we've run out of money, quite frankly, at the end of December. So what I would like to do is make a proposal to the committee that the committee can review in the near future. I'll send it out and then we need to have a discussion about that.
Okay, Richard, we can follow up on that.
Thank you.
Are there questions for the architect or the contractors?
I have kind of a question slash comment for Jeff and Richard particularly. And I say it, I'm going to say this, I've told the I've talked to the contractor and Adam is aware of this, my concern, the concern or frustration I have is that I learned that you cannot turn off the lights if you want to in the cafeteria or the hallway and so forth. And I'm saying it so that everybody can hear it because it's it's embarrassing, frankly. We've got this energy efficient net zero public building and we're forced to leave the lights on unless we can figure out which circuit it's a circuit it is. And I know some corrective action is being taken on one or two of the circuits, but it just it should not have been designed that way. I'm not getting on your case, but I think for especially a net zero building, more attention should have been paid to this. I'm amazed that CMTA doesn't have people look at that, but maybe they do, and this is the the right way to do it. But again, from a public point of view, it looks bad. From a personal point of view, I think it is bad and a practical way, it's goofy to have to leave the lights on. The way they're designed now, they'd be on full full power. And even though you don't need them, as we see them when we go in now. And finally, in talking to a teacher, they said that, you know, they'll have events from time to time and want to alter the lights, whether it's a dance or a party, a theme, something or another. And if you can't control the lights at all, it kind of changes the it doesn't help you change the mood the way you might want to do it.
Chris, I reached out to Craig before this meeting to get the skinny on all this. And he basically said that he's going to be meeting with a bunch of people next week to decide and see if it's a programming thing that they can do or add wiring or if it's, you know, the BMS can shut off through different times. So he's going to evaluate all three scenarios and see which one he can do. Ideally, obviously, the programming component would be the 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 best. But as far as switching, I guess that's the reason for the BMS is that actually controls the timing of the lights and stuff. So he's going to look at all three scenarios and see what what can be done. He didn't know at the time, you know, why certain lights were on and not on the daylight sensors, but he's going to look at the programming component and see if it isn't something that can be done through that.
Hey, Chris, I spent about two hours today after our commissioning meeting walking those two particular areas with our electrician and with Joe Luciano and with the plans. And Craig was incorrect in his assumption what's installed is exactly what's shown within the contract documents. So you have a daylight sensor at the skylight near the main stairway that that. near the main stairway that, that senses the hi-hats um, and controls the hi-hats with light. Easily tied into the corridor lights through that same daylight sensor. That should be an easy wiring fix. However, the cafeteria has no daylight sensing called for. Um, and, and it's a, it's being controlled right now based on, uh, the, um, if you review drawing E zero point zero two, as far as the control of the cafeteria. It's controlled by a time clock through the BMS system. On at six, off at seven or something like that. On at six, off at eight. Um, you could wire a daylight sensor in that cafeteria, but it gets a little more complicated because you have all of that exposed construction. Um, I don't know, maybe Craig can get out there and kind of place one, or John is, is electrical engineer. Um, and it is controlled through the BM, BMS system, but I think it's either on or off. So to Chris's point, um, as far as any other type scenic type control of that, I'm not sure. So the cafeteria will be a little more complicated than the main corridor, Chris, to answer your question.
Thanks. Yeah, and I, I recognize, appreciate you're trying to, and your word fix is a really interesting one, but to fix it. But I really want to emphasize to Jeff and to Richard that don't do this to another customer. I, I really mean it. Allow them to control lights that, gosh, you'd think you'd be able to turn them on and off, just like in the room we're in right now. We can control these. Um, is that necessary? Oh, no, we could have a computer do it. But it's nice that people can turn them on and off when they want to. Thanks.
Thank you, Chris. Um, I too marvel at how complicated lighting switches have become. Um, why can't we just have an off and on toggle switch? But I'll, I'll re, I'll revisit this with, with, uh, color on.
Yeah, we, uh, Richard, we sent some follow-up information to Craig and John this afternoon because he was thinking that the way it should have been was opposite than the way it was actually installed and it was installed per their drawings. So the whole key, if we want to follow Chris's lead, I think you need a daylight sensor in the cafeteria. At least for the lighting controls.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Can you copy me on that?
Communicate. I will have, yep, I will.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Other questions for after Richard or Steve or Al? Okay, then seeing none, I guess we can move on with our agenda. Um, so Adam, let's do the, like, the current, uh, PCOS next.
Sure, I'll share my screen with those. Uh, so the first item is actually, there's no, there's no vote needed. This is just FYI on something that was approved on an expedited basis. Um, this is a CCD fifteen for some camera arms that were coordinated with Jamie because the cameras were being blocked by, uh, like columns or whatnot. So that's, that's working, sort of getting resolved, but it's just an FYI for this committee for tonight. Um, next item that is, the next you are up for, uh, approval. Uh, one fifty-seven, uh, this is for box out of conduits at the kitchen electrical panel. Uh, Jeff, you want to talk about this one?
Yeah, in the kitchen, there's a, uh, wall mounted, uh, service panel. There were conduits coming up through the floor. So we ended up asking them to pour some concrete and do the, uh, epoxy around that to prevent any mop or debris or gunk from building up in there. So we made a little dam there to make sure that it was easily cleanable. This is in the kitchen. So we figured that was the right thing to do. So we had them do it.
Uh, questions about this, uh, PCO?
I can't see the cost.
Six hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Okay, uh, is there then a motion to approve PCO one fifty-seven for the amount of six hundred and twenty-seven dollars and eighty-three cents for the box out of conduits at the kitchen electric panel? Okay, thank you. Your second? That was from Steve's second? Second from Madison, thank you. Any final questions? Then all in favor for approving PCO one fifty-seven, please indicate? Pos or abstentions? And that passes unanimously?
And second item is PCO one fifty-nine. Uh, this is for changing the door decals. Um, it's five hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, this was at the, uh, request of the fire marshals, all right, Jeff?
Yeah, we had, uh, doors labeled for emergency personnel to come to the building and they wanted it to be, uh, labeled as actually the word door number one. And then, uh, we all decided in a clockwise or counterclockwise manner to follow the classroom numbering to just for emergency responders to see that where door one is as the main entrance, door two, secondary main entrance, three, as you move around the building. So if they have to respond, they'll know exactly very quickly where they're at relative to the exits.
Questions?
And that's five hundred dollars for four doors?
They're decals, yeah, they're the, they're the vinyl stickers.
That's twelve doors.
Uh, Chris McAbow?
I move that we approve, uh, uh, PCO one fifty-nine.
Okay, thank you. Second from Mary. Uh, any further questions, comments? Then all in favor of approving PCO one fifty-nine, please indicate? Oppose or abstentions? Okay. Okay. Uh, then Adam, that is all that you had for the, um, for the PCOS for this meeting then, right?
For this evening, yes. Do you want to bring up the draft motions from the past meeting?
Um, we can probably handle it with, well, yeah, we can handle it without that, I think.
Okay.
So we have a number of votes, uh, from the last meeting that we have to basically reaffirm. Um, so we'll do the agenda item that we added um, right now. Um, so, uh, first, um, thing that we voted on was approval of the January, uh, the January twelve minutes. Um, okay, we have a motion from.
I'll second it. Oh, this is again.
Okay, sorry, who moved? Who moved? Was it Tony? Tony moved. We approved the January twelve minutes and the second was from Madison. Uh, all in favor of approving those minutes, please indicate? Any opposed or abstentions? Okay?
Kathy abstains.
Oh, Kathy.
She wasn't there.
Okay, then the next item was, uh, we had a motion to approve PCO one forty-six R for the amount of two thousand four hundred and eighty-nine dollars ninety-eight cents for installation of ten electric hand dryers. Is there a motion to approve that? I think you, Tony, second, uh, Rich, uh, all in favor, please indicate? Opposed or abstentions? Okay. We had a motion to appropriate forty-eight hundred dollars to ACT Group as part of the existing town contract for copier moving services. Is there a motion to approve that? Thank you, Tony, second, uh, Chris McAbow. Uh, all in favor, please indicate? Any opposed or abstentions? Okay, and then we had a motion for the pay, the invoice and the payout. Do you want to read it, Mary?
Um, I would repeat that motion, um, and it would read that we are moving to approve the invoice packet dated January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, including invoices from ACT, CES, CIRMA, Colliers Project Leaders, Hilliard, JP LaRue, Contractor, Lakeshore, Langen, Pro Systems, Red Thread, TSKP, WB Meyer, and Weston and Sampson in the amount of two hundred eight thousand seven hundred nineteen dollars and ninety-four cents. And Newfield's application for payment number twenty in the amount of eight hundred eighty-eight thousand three hundred fourteen dollars and three cents for a total approval of one million ninety-seven thousand thirty-three dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Okay, we have motions or second, Chris McAbow? Uh, all in favor of moving this motion, please indicate? Any opposed or abstentions? Okay. Uh, and then with that, that brings us to adjournment.
I move we adjourn.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, pardon me. I reject, I, I resent.
Not on the agenda, but just wondered if I could address the, the building committee.
Sure.
Uh, so yesterday was just an incredible milestone and I want to thank you for your service. Uh, we had a very busy day onsite with staff working and, uh, literally tears in my eyes when I saw a staff member putting library books on the shelf. It was the first staff member who showed up to work in this new building. And from that moment, uh, beyond, there were tours, there was professional learning. Lauren, I know you're on here and I hope you can hear this. She has done an amazing job and she brought, uh, both campus faculty and staff together. Uh, they sat in the cafeteria at round tables, uh, and started to work on furthering our transition plans. And so I know that there have been some conversations about, uh, delays and should April be the day? Well, first and foremost, foremost, I'm glad I didn't pick February. Uh, but, uh, Lauren and her team are, uh, taking this time appropriately to absorb just being in an amazing space. Uh, it is beautiful. Uh, and they are continuing to think about how to best use this and empower our students. The, the final thing that I want to, uh, just share with you is, uh, Randy will share a video with you that, uh, Chris has been authoring video visits. I don't know if the, um, building committee has been watching them. Uh, I've grown, uh, to believe that Chris's next career will be on PBS. Uh, the latest one is his best. Uh, it is an amazing net zero. Uh, and it will be a teaching tool. And, uh, it's just another example of the intentionality of, we're going to work even harder because you did your job so well to make sure that not only is the building a hundred percent used and appreciated, but it actualizes everything that we dreamed and believed in terms of twenty-first century learning and sustainable, uh, net zero designs. So thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Al, can I move?
Yes, you may.
I, I, I move we adjourn.
Okay, thank you. Chris, a second? Mary, seconds. Uh, then all in favor, you can indicate and sign off. Thank you all for joining us tonight.